Good afternoon. My name is Rolando Ayaville. I'm with the Greater Miami Convention and Visitors Bureau. I have the privilege of heading up the marketing team and also the executive vice president. You'll be very important for our president and CEO. Just to thank you again for coming and thank you to our partners here at the South Dade Cultural Arts Center. This is my first time here. This is an amazing facility. We were learning about some of the amazing performances that have been happening here since it opened not too long ago. But it's not a coincidence that as we go around town talking about our strategic planning processes, we've actually had the opportunity to do this in some of our community's great cultural facilities. In fact, our first town hall meeting a few weeks back was at the Little Haiti Cultural Center. And I would encourage all of you to visit that. That's quite a facility itself. We've also been at the Arts Center. That was last week, I believe. Yes, we were at the Arts Center. At their Black Box Theater. I wasn't even aware that this facility had a Black Box Theater, but I hear this transforms into a cabaret for about... So it sounded quite intriguing. But back to our strategic plan. The Greater Miami Convention and Visitors Bureau, as you may know, is the official sales and marketing organization for Greater Miami and the beaches. And that's a mouthful, but it means that we represent the community as a whole, what's known as Miami or Greater Miami. And as we do every five or so years, we embark on a strategic planning process. It's a critical effort that draws the blueprint for what we will be doing, not only on behalf of our organization, but for the hospitality industry. And as we all know, and as the blue and green button state, tourism is everybody's business. So I know you guys get it. You're here, but even the folks, everyone in this community is impacted by hospitality, travel, and tourism. One in five jobs is in the hospitality sector. So all this is critically important as we craft this strategic planning process. I told you a little bit about where we've been in terms of where, you know, this process was also, as a result, we wanted to engage the best of the best to help us, to help us and guide us in formulating this very important document. So what we did over the summer, we put together a committee, and I believe several of the folks in the room actually served on that committee, to help us select a consultant, a partner, to help guide us, but also to provide an independent third-party perspective on hospitality, not only in this community, but around the globe. We are competing on a global basis. So having that reference point of not only what we're doing, but what other destinations are doing and what our customers think of us is critically important. So we went through a very comprehensive R and D process. As a result, we did engage our friends from Ernst &amp; Young, global firm with a huge Miami-based operation in the hospitality practice. And you'll be hearing from them and their partners in a moment. They partnered with a firm called MMGY Global. And they are a best-in-class travel marketing firm. So together with ourselves and hopefully with yourselves, we are building this document, this blueprint. And I stress with yourselves because hopefully we'll hear from you. We are encouraging dialogue. We are encouraging observations, criticisms, good matter or otherwise, but we need to hear from you. We want to ensure that your thoughts and ideas are being taken seriously. In fact, that's why we're videotaping the proceedings. I guess I had to say that for legal purposes. So we are also asking folks to speak up and use microphones. I guess we'll have mics floating around the room at the right time in the program. So with that said, I did want to turn it over to our president and CEO to extend a more formal welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Rolando. I'm going to be very brief because we want to hear from you. I want to give a shout out to... We have some repeat customers here, right? The National Park Service was a little hating last week, or whenever they were. Thank you for returning. Anybody else have been to multiple events?
More Miami Guide, went downtown.
Downtown at the Arts Center. Thank you for returning. Anybody else other than staff who's been to multiple events? Well, we're glad you're back. I guess you had a lot of fun at the first session, son? Or we didn't get it right the first time?
No, it was good.
Good.
It's good to hear the perspective locally.
There we go. There we go. But we want to give a shout out towards some of our elected officials who are very supportive of travel and tourism. Miami's a number-one industry. We got a staff representative from U.S. Senator Marco Rubio. This is his district, right?
Yeah.
Called the state of Florida, too. And then the newly-elected chair of the Miami-Dade County Commission, Linda Bell's office.
Vice Chair.
I'm sorry, the Vice Chair. No, I didn't know that. I'm sorry. Well, that was a Freudian slip. That's next time. A Freudian slip. So don't tell her. I said, "Well, you can go ahead and tell her." So the new vice chair of the Miami-Dade County Commission and former mayor of the city, Longston. And so we're excited about your being here. So it's open. And we have a great website, destinationmiami.org, right? And you'll see that flashed up. So please, send that to your other employees, your partners, your friends, your enemies. Everybody doesn't have to be here physically for the town hall meeting. This is the fifth and arguably is going to be the best town hall meeting we've had. So we've got a lot of practices. It's a great facility. Because Rolando said this is his first time. I was here for the swearing-in last week. Here was my first visit. How many is their first visit to this great facility? Put your hand up. I mean, that's fantastic. So this is just another great venue. I believe it was built with tourist money. So that's great. And this is a wonderful facility. We have a county that's larger than two states. So we are, as Rolando said, your official destination sales and marketing company. So we're here to listen. You're not going to hear much more from me unless I may have an idea or a reaction. So, but thank you all for being here.
Here, applause. Okay, so let me set up the context just a little bit more before I turn it over to our partners. I know for those of you that were at our Little Haiti session, that session focused primarily on cultural heritage tourism. But the beauty of it is that even at the other sessions, including this one where the topics are a little broader, culture and heritage tourism has been a consistent theme. And I think that's great. And I think that really presents an opportunity for us not only to continue to attract a record number of visitors, but to have those visitors stay longer, to explore new things that are happening in our community, to come to this facility, to go down to South Dade, to experience all that art Basel and all the satellite fairies that are happening this week have to offer. But I do want to show us all as a point of reference, some of you may have seen this already, but we like to remind ourselves, over the last past five years, and some of the trends that we've identified that are reference points for this process. But when you look at what our domestic visitors liked most in our destination, weather, pretty much consistently is on top along with beaches. You'll notice South Beach and Ocean Drive. And what all that means, of course, has risen significantly in the last five years. It's important to note that attractions, and the way you define attractions is critical, but it's in its broadest sense. South Dade is blessed to have many. In fact, most of our attractions are in South Dade. But it also means our museums and some of those other things that people are now defining broadly as attractions. And that's seen a very nice bump. Nightlife continues to be strong, so does sunbathing. Our international ambience, it's one of our greatest strengths, the fact that we're both tropical and cosmopolitan. Friendly people. I know we're probably not friendly enough, but we're trending in the right direction. I think it's all relative. We think we're not friendly enough. And I think we all had experiences where we haven't been. But people from the outside are starting to recognize that perhaps our edge is coming off a little bit. Restaurants has practically doubled. A lot of things have happened in the culinary scene over the past five years. You know, your bureau has developed the Miami Spice Restaurant Program. That's helped. The South Beach Water and Food Festival. Amazing chefs. A lot of things happening. I mean, we are not too far away from an amazing agricultural area where a lot of those local products are actually served in our local restaurants. But here's the one that really keeps jumping out consistently is cultural activities. And again, we're here at this facility. It's during Art Basel Week. But look at this amazing jump from 23% to 14%. And this is through 2011, which is our full-year figures. I suspect that if we had the 2012 numbers, that would be even higher. Give you a snapshot. I'm not going to go through these one by ones on the international side. You see some similarities. I mean, obviously, shopping is huge, up at close to 52%. Cultural activities from 1% to 30%. I mean, this is amazing. And again, I think it speaks not only to the renaissance of our cultural offerings, but the fact that our international visitors, which by the way, not only represent 50% of our overall market mix, but 70% of the spend. So they're traveling in bigger groups. They're staying longer. So the international side of the equation is critically important. And we are, in fact, the most international destination in the U.S. Couple of other, I think, just two more charts in terms of where folks are coming from. On the state side, New York continues to be our biggest market. If you look at the growth, the West Coast, Los Angeles, California, have seen some dramatic percentage growth. It's still relatively small. I mean, New York is so dominant at 1.7 million. But we have enjoyed steady growth over the last five years, state side. When you look at on the domestic side, I mean, Brazil, close to 50% growth. I think we've all seen that. Hopefully, we've all picked up a little bit of Portuguese along the way. It definitely helps at the front. But Canada continues to be very, very strong. They too have seen growth. But when you look at Argentina, Colombia, Venezuela, Latin America as a whole has seen exponential growth. And these are dramatic numbers that I think anybody would enjoy. Germany has... I'm sorry, I'm trying to follow this. Yeah, Germany is up just a tad. England has gone through some tough time over the last five years. I will tell you that in 2012, if I looked at the first six months of 2012, Germany's actually up 20... Pardon me, 8%. And England is up 2.2%. So again, you're looking at five-year figures, but they seem to have turned a corner. So more recent activity has been more positive, but we're looking at five years. Bahamas has also seen some recent growth in France and Costa Rica. And that kind of rounds out our key feeder markets. And I think it's important to have that context, where people are coming from, what people like when they're here. There's lots of other research. In fact, we encourage you on the way out, there's a purple document. And hopefully you have a chance to... It's our visitor profile that has not only this data, but much, much more, much deeper, much richer. And please take that. It's a great tool for your marketing plan development. And there's also several other key documents back there as well. So I think that's it. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve Cohen. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, wrong Steve. I'm sorry. I'm going to hand it over to our colleagues here from Ernst &amp; Young. They're going to walk you through a little bit more of the process perhaps, but more importantly, facilitating some key questions, some very broad topics. And again, we really, really want to hear from you. And that's going to be an important part for us to make sure that this process is successful. So thank you.
So a little bit about Ernst &amp; Young here. My name is Mike Russo. I'm with our real estate and hospitality consulting group here out of Miami. Many of you are going to see Ernst &amp; Young and you're going to recognize us as a Big Four accounting firm. We are an accounting firm. There's also a smaller consultancy subservice line within Ernst &amp; Young. And one of those groups is the hospitality group. So we work with a lot of public and private organizations to help them with either strategic direction for tourism initiatives, for building a new hotel, building new convention centers. And we run the gauntlet. Anything that touches tourism and advisory services, Ernst &amp; Young can be there to provide some services. And my colleague over here, Steve, he is from MMGY Global. And I'll let Steve introduce himself and his company a little bit more here in a few seconds. But overall, they are an integrated marketing services firm. Their expertise is going out and connecting with the consumers and getting their insight to understand what consumers want in a destination such as Miami. So some of the key activities, there's five essential activities we're doing. The first one, we're just analyzing industry trends. We're taking the pulse of what's going on in Miami-Dade, what's going on in the state of Florida, what's going on in the U.S., what's going on internationally. And the second component of our project here is to look at the tourism infrastructure. What does Miami have? What does Miami need? What do other communities have? And how can Miami best position themselves in terms of infrastructure relative to competitors and even up-and-coming destinations that might be off everybody's radar? And then the third component, which, you know, we just facilitate these input sessions, such as coming on and talking to you all here today, recording sessions that we work with our GMCV colleagues on. And then finally, the last two, we want to make sure that any strategy and implementation plan actually connects well and fits as a nice puzzle piece with the tourism plan at the state and national level to make sure that the plan that comes out of Miami-Dade, you know, has a good balance and it pulls in all of those programs that the United States is doing to increase tourism from overseas. The state of Florida is doing to increase tourism from other states in the U.S. And we want to make sure that Miami capitalizes on those components and also leverages some of the individual components that Miami-Dade has to offer. So with that here, I'll turn it over to Steve, too.
Thanks, Mike. Good afternoon, everyone. Before I talk about strategic plan process, I'm talking a little bit about my organization without making a sales pitch. We are the, claim to be, the world's largest fully-integrated travel marketing organization. I had the part of the practice related to consumer insights, asking questions. And as Mike said, all kinds of consumer research and industry research. But beyond that, we're a full-service ad agency, agency of record services, digital web development, branding, what have you. So today, I'm wearing a hat of facilitator. So I'm going to talk about how we're going about this whole data gathering session we're having. And then I'm going to collect some data from you. So for those of you who have been here before and you're used to hearing me talk, I appreciate you coming back. I said we don't hate you the first time, first couple of times. But let me share this with you. In trying to develop a five-year strategic plan for Greater Miami and the beaches, it's a very large process. We don't just sit down on a table and say, "Okay, what do you think?" We've done a number of different exercises in order to get us to where we are right now. We've talked to key stakeholders. This is part of that. We all are stakeholders in what we're doing. We've also done some one-on-one interviews with stakeholders all over Miami-Dade County doing these town halls. And in order for us to be successful, we need you to participate today. So we're going to give you some questions and very hopeful that you have a lot of things to say to us that will enable us to put together even a stronger strategic plan. Next, conduct primary consumer research. That's what my team back in Orlando is doing. We've talked to 1,000 people, U.S. domestic travelers, about travel intentions to Miami and to competitive destinations. We've also talked to 1,200 people on a global level about perceived interest in travel to Miami, past travel, reasons why they might not come here. So we're hearing from international and from global travelers. Next, we're in the process this week of talking to meeting planners and tour operators about what do their clients say about booking meetings in Miami? What do their clients say about taking a tour to Miami? Are there barriers? Are there things that are missing? Are there things that cause people to... ...say, "Oh, I have my meeting in Miami," or "I don't want a tour in Miami"? Just to understand from an even broader point of view, what's going on with people's interest in visiting Miami. And the next, analysis of comparable destinations. And I'm going to couple that with the discussing best practices. We're talking to people at convention visitors bureaus all over the U.S. who are in competitive areas under the guise of, "We're not really trying to steal your tourists," but yes, we are. I'm just not telling you that. But they've been very cooperative and telling us what are some of the things that they've done in terms of how they've been able to increase tourism to their markets so we can learn from others who have done the same thing that we're doing and not necessarily mimic what they did, but get a sense of what's worked and perhaps what hasn't worked. So that's as much as we have to present to you today. So you're not free to go. So the rest of the conversation today is going to be around a series of questions that I have for you. I'm going to put a question up on the screen. Not going to read it to you. All educated people can all read. And I'm going to ask for your feedback. And we have people around the room with microphones. And it's very important that you talk into the microphone because, as you know, we're recording this. And we tried to do it without microphones and it was an horrible failure. So I'll put the question up there. I'll call on you. And feel free to say what you think, looking at it through the lens of what you do for a living or as a citizen of Miami-Dade County, your thoughts on the answer to the question that we have. So here's today's first question. Before I do that, I forgot I have line. I'm a research guy. I can't talk in front of an audience without sharing some information. Almost forgot that I do this. Here's some stuff from our portrait of American travelers. We do a study every year, doing it for 23 years among 2,500 people in the U.S. who earn over $75,000 a year and travel at least one night a year at a paid accommodation at least 75 miles away from home. So we looked at an increase, well, you can see an increase in people's interest in visiting Miami and the beaches, up two percentage points from 2010. For those of you who are not statistics people, that is a significant difference given the size of the audience that we talk to. So I'm talking to 2,000 people. A two percentage point movement is a significant movement. Otherwise, I would have shown it. Next, we also talked about economic climate. So we have more people, or excuse me, fewer people that believe that even though a recession is over or I'm being told the recession is over, I don't necessarily act or believe that it is. While the number's still high, it's down three percentage points. Again, a significant movement. We're trending in the right direction. So that's down three points from last year. Next, interestingly, people are willing to pay full price as long as they're getting quality out. Look at the prices for hotels in Miami Beach this weekend. I know, I live in Orlando. I tried to find a hotel. There's some quality hotel products there at a premium price this weekend. But people are saying they're willing to pay. And that's why the hotels are charging it because they can. Up five points since we measured the same question last year. And finally, this is a question that we're only showing the results from this year. More people say they're likely to take more leisure trips next year than are likely to take less leisure trips next year. If I showed you a chart that showed that over time, you'd see that in 2008, 2009, it was opposite. It's now back in the direction it was in the early to mid 2000s. And that's a good thing for all of us. So back to our questions. Here's today's first question. How can we... Oh, I said I wouldn't read it. So here's today's first question. I'm really interested in your big-picture thoughts on what can we do to answer this question? As we develop this strategic plan, this is certainly one of the questions we have to ask. What are your thoughts on how we can accomplish this? And as I like to say, if you don't speak up, I'm going to come and call on you and put the microphone right in front of you. So please feel free to speak.
Steve, the other thing I'd like to stress, I mentioned earlier, is that it would be both respective of what the Convention and Visitors Bureau can do, but it's also, we're talking about the hospitality industry as a whole.
That's why I said if you look at it through your own lens, what can you do? What can we do? Big-pictureize what can individual entities do? So who looks like they don't want me to call? Who's on their phone? All of a sudden, all the heads pop up. So we can't do anything. We are... It's all, the awareness is all there. There's nothing we can do. I know you have something to say. Bill? Oh, I will ask if you say your name and your organization before you speak. So I...
Margie Bestor, Redland Tropical Gardens and Botanical Foundation. We're also known as Redland Tropical Gardens. We filed a DBA because the official name is very long, obviously. We just put out a press release of doing Home for the Holidays for the Homestead Centennial for the 100 years. So the way it reads, if I can take just a moment, I'll read it to you. It's only 23 paragraphs. Okay. "Homestead, Florida, on Wednesday, November 15th, at 6:00 p.m., the first community-based tourism workforce educational program awarded certificates of completion and signed by both Redland Tropical Gardens and Partners Miami-Dade College of the Continuing Education and Professional Development. During a reception hosted by Mr. Mark Bell, owner of Hotel Redland, to see South Dade as a natural and cultural heritage tourism destination. These uniquely educated tour guides were trained in nature-based tourism, covering agriculture in our most diverse redland. Our cultivated area as well as both national parks, our wilderness with their unique ecosystems while being polished to host international visitors through cooperation of the Greater Miami Host Committee. This is phase one of a two-year South Dade Smart Growth Sustainable Communities Project, established by Redland Tropical Gardens, a state-of-Florida not-for-profit, 501(c)(3), listed as Redland Tropical Gardens. This initiative will serve as a vision to bridge man and nature by connecting yesterday, today, and tomorrow, at the same time embracing the multicultural indigenous individuals seeking harmony, economic and social vitality with long-term sustainability. This project will enhance the quality of life for residents in all our CRA areas where poverty rates are staggering 44%, well above the county's 42% average, while assisting to promote the 2013 City of Homestead Centennial. It's their 100-year anniversary. And next year, 2014, Florida City Centennial, while preparing for tourism by Green Restoration and a Plan for an Economic Generator. Please join us by reserving your seats. We are ready for tours. And we're beginning... The Holiday Tour is not tomorrow, but a week from Saturday. Oh, I'm sorry. Tomorrow's Friday. Let me get it straight. On the 15th, December 15th. And anybody who's interested, as Homestead is home for the Historic Holiday Tour.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As Rolando talked about, we've done this all over Miami-Dade County. And to me, someone who doesn't live here, it's the most interesting for me to come down here because it's the most different. A lot of what I heard in the previous town halls were very similar. Now I'm down here and I get to hear about ecotourism and agricultural tourism, things that we don't hear anything about when we're downtown, when we're at the beach, when we're in North Dade. So thank you for what you have to say and for reminding me why we're down here today. With that, come on. You can take mine.
Thank you. Hi. And this is to go to the question we have. How do we get people to know a little bit more about what Miami has to offer? I think it goes to the point that you just made. Our locals, I believe, could be our best resource for letting others know what's going on through their friends, their families that come over here. When they come, they're looking for something to do. And oftentimes, our locals don't even know the many great resources that we have. They know the basics, but not the details. So one of the things that I think is really, really needed is for us to get our locals excited again about what Miami has to offer.
Thank you. One in the back, Bill.
Thank you. Astro Braden, Biscay National Park. I think just to answer the question, the first thing that I noticed on the surface is when you say, "Increase the awareness of the unique experience of Greater Miami and the beaches." Somebody who's lived here in South Florida my whole life, when I think of Greater Miami, I don't think of South Dade. I don't think of Homestead. So with all of the amazing things that South Dade and Homestead and Florida City has to offer, I don't know that people think of this area when you think of Greater Miami.
Hi. This is Rosa Brito, Executive Director, with Hope Support, South Dade County Commerce. And I think we're getting up on you. South Dade really wants to be noted in your travel tourism guides. They just spoke about ecotourism and all the opportunities that we do have in South Dade. Also, you can note that we have a military base, which is a reserve base, but it's very active. It's where we just completed an airshow this past November 1st. And it was really difficult to get the word out to the community and to bring people from other areas. Although we've been managed to bring over 4,000 visitors. Although we've been managed to bring over 4,000 members for a two-day weekend. So I just wanna make sure that you also make a note of that.
Thank you.
Hi, Kathy Martin, More Miami God. I have a new-to-Miami perspective somewhat, because I've been here 15 months. I believe and agree so far that our greatest asset and resource is the local resident as far as increasing awareness. That's where we can replicate many times over. What the locals enjoy is gonna be shared amongst them, whether it's their next-door neighbors, or to their families in another state or area of the world. So I think giving them a way, a resource of some kind to tap into in that regard. For example, I've been here 15 months, I can tell you many of the big features of Miami, but I cannot tell you any of the local community features. It is only since I've taken my particular position with More Miami Guide that I have actually had to investigate communities and areas and went, wow, how come, how come I didn't know about this? And if there's a marketing strategy that can target and spotlight the communities that we're discussing here, the many, in many different places, you know, some of the older communities where their business is 50 years and older, that everyone knows about it, you forget they're there because they haven't been brought to people's attention again. And they're starting to die out because people are passing them by for what's new and glitzy, and yet, and yet they would come back if it was put in front of their face again. That's my best suggestion, is to find a way to bring the communities before the eyes of the community.
One of the questions we asked, I mentioned earlier that we're doing stakeholder interviews where we talk to a lot of people on a one-on-one basis. And one of the questions that we ask them is, when you have people visit you, what are the things that they must do when they're here? So instead of asking that to this group, because there's too many of you to do that, I would encourage you, if you want to be able to be heard on that, to go onto the Destination Miami website and post for us one of those things that we might not be thinking of, that you would have people do based on where you live and what's around you. That way, we can incorporate all those as we continue to develop this plan. If I ask you right now, that would be all we do for the rest of the time that we're here. But we're very interested in that, and as I said, it's different for me to be down here hearing something completely different than what we heard before.
Quickly, does it that way on the website, is that located? Is there a certain location to post that, or?
Rolando, what, do you have the, yeah, if you just go to the website, you'll see the version of these same questions. You can look at this, you can do the sort of analysis as well.
Destinationmiami.org?
Dot org, yes. Thank you. So we've talked about the semantics of the term, Greater Miami and the beaches. We've talked about local residents. What else can we do to make people more aware? A local resident grassroots approach, if you will, is a point well made. Outside of that, what else can we do to increase that awareness?
Greg Santos from Welcome, Bienvenidos, editor of the magazine. It probably won't apply to the South Dade area, but more of the Miami as a whole. But I think to increase awareness throughout, the entertainment medium has always been a useful route. I wanna say, in August, I had a family member come down from New York, and he asked me, can we visit Carroll City? And I'm like, how do you know about Carroll City? And he said, well, isn't that where Rick Ross is from? Right. So for those of you who don't know, Rick Ross is a rap.
We all know Rick.
He's a rap artist, but it's probably not a popular neighborhood to tourists, and he was actually interested in visiting. And I myself have traveled several places in recent years. I've been to LA and Japan, actually in Tokyo, and I hear Pitbull songs. And he's constantly promoting Miami, probably not conscious of it, but everybody knows what Kaya Ocho is all of a sudden. So I think through the use of a celebrity, it's always worked, and they've increased awareness outside of Miami as to what's going on in Miami.
Thank you.
My name is Corky Davis here, I serve as Executive Director of the Greater Miami Host Committee. And I serve on the Board of Directors for Redland Tropical Gardens. And we do have a community-based tourism initiative which we're launching, and first beginning with our locals, so that we can, in fact, educate our community about this rural community. And that separates us out from the Greater Miami area in general, because this is countryside. This is where you have. This is where we have two national parks. This is the only community, actually, in the United States that actually has two national parks. So certainly creating the awareness from that perspective, promoting the concepts of ecotourism, which we began launching the bridge between man and nature in 2003, with the efforts of Miami-Dade County and the state of Florida in terms of tourism, specific individuals who helped us to talk about and promote that brand of the bridge between man and man and nature in 2003, and establishing for the very first time ecotourism initiatives. Now we're even broadening those experiences to include ecotourism, marine tourism, and agritourism. And it's a wonderful opportunity when you talk about agritourism, because the plants and this green community that we have that was destroyed after Hurricane Andrew, that's a story in itself as well. But the, there's an ethnobotany connection there. So from a multicultural standpoint, you can actually bridge culture and nature here very comfortably, because the plants that have been brought here and are here, and all the feeds and clothes that our people come from all over the world. And so there's an international connection there that's a wonderful one.
Thank you. I usually mention this, I don't talk about myself much, I did grow up in South Florida. I always feel like I'm back home when I'm here. And when you mentioned ecotourism and the agriculture. I first lived in Miami in the 70s, and I lived up near Dade Land. And you think about what that's like now, back in the 70s, not so much. It was a lot like it was down here, and hopefully it never really makes it down here, because there's such a unique quality to this part of the county. Yes?
Okay, good afternoon, Kathy Horton, the Teacher Academy Hospitality Tourism High School. I don't know if you're doing this, but I think another good opportunity would be to have guest keepers come to the classroom. In our academies, there are several high schools in Miami-Dade County that have the Academy of Hospitality Tourism, where we talk about geographies, we talk about sustainable tourism, the five industry segments. And to that end, we also have students that need to be placed, and some are internships. It has been very difficult to find places to place them. So if they knew more about what businesses are going in the south end, it would also help us as well, if it was an experiential learning activity, where someone would actually come in and talk to them.
Good, thank you.
Good afternoon, Leslie Diaz with the Homestead Job Corps Center. And I just wanna point out that there are opportunities for our students out there. We were blessed with knowing Ms. Corky and Ms. Margie Buster. Recently, Miami-Dade College offered, together with Redland Tropical Gardens, a tour guide certification course. And seven of our students graduated from that program and will be leading the tour that Margie read about today. So to let our local students know about what the community has is a tremendous opportunity.
Thank you. So a lot about the grassroots, get people here involved in what there is to offer, that goes up from people who visit, many people here who live from up north, still have people visiting them, the ability to get the word out that way. Talked about celebrity endorsers. Any other, anything else we can do to increase that awareness?
We will do a series of events, sustainable events, that will promote the best of our community from an eco-agro standpoint, our cultural heritage, specifically. Redland Tropical Gardens will be producing this year coming in 2013 as a part of the Centennial for Homestead, the Tropical Cornucopia Event. And that will actually showcase our community, all of its horticultural, green experiences, and opportunities in agribusiness, opportunities to bring international communities together, all the entertainment, all the diverse products of plants and food, products that come from the area, as well as the connections, the businesses that are here, that we refer to as in the natural, organic building as well. So that will be taking place in February, and certainly that's something that in terms of increasing the awareness, the opportunities for marketing that particular event. Another event's gonna be taking place throughout the next two years with the Centennial experiences, I think will be very positive.
Thank you.
I have something to add, Charlie, in the Commissioner Bell's office. And it's interesting, because you knew the question again, and colleagues in our office, we were talking about the TV commercial with California, and how it's so unique, and how it pictures like everything from, you know, snowboarding to celebrities, things like that. And I think that we should invest in maybe considering some commercials and things like that that are really unique, like, because it does attract people's attention. And it's just something, you know, that I could never swing with other states or anything like that. So maybe that's something to consider, because we were just talking about that the other day, actually.
Thank you. Anyone ever been to Epcot? Ever been on the ride to Soaring? Been on that ride? What does Soaring show you? Do you remember?
I mean, from California.
Shows you California. When I worked at Disney, that was a gift from Disneyland to Disney World. And what we're doing is a commercial for California, for all the people that are visiting Orlando. Here's all the great things in California. I always thought, why don't we have that for Florida? And then specifically, the diversity of the state. I know this isn't about the whole state, but we have the opportunity through our brothers and sisters at Walt Disney World to emphasize what we have here versus what you can go travel 2,000 miles away and do. Thanks for making me remember that, and when you said that, why don't we do that? There was another, yes, sir.
I'm Tom Gagnon, Director of the Board of University of Miami Health System. And I'm gonna go and agree with Kathy, with what she said. And I think the way I see it, is we need to provide tools. I think excitement alone would not let me tell my family back in my country about the great things that are happening here. If I had a tool that I can share through social media, like microvideos, and what she was saying, or something like that. And it would be very short and very specific to what's happening everywhere. So it's, we're looking at a kind of this opportunity for so many things that are happening. If I have a tool, I can then share it with everyone that has possibly run, and so on. But it's very difficult for me to just say, this is great for me. For example, my cousin just flew down here for Black Friday. How can you hear about that? How can you never mention that to me? I would have never thought. It turns out retail prices in Miami often are about half of what people think is abroad and are in many countries. So when you have even lower prices than that, then that was an incentive. And I don't know what you're talking about, but of course I'm gonna go. I think that we don't even think about that.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to question number two. We only have 73 more to go. So what are we missing? As people consider their vacation destinations, the things that they wanna do, and, you know, take out things like snow skiing, because that's not gonna happen here. But is there something that this area is missing that people go to do elsewhere because we don't have it, something we could potentially have? Yes?
Something that would add to the Miami experience is more culture. We are, it's a diverse city, of course, you go from one corner to the next and you will pass by a diverse community. However, I would add maybe more play, maybe more museums, maybe extending that to another city. Maybe banking on what you're saying, the gift from Disneyland to Disney World, perhaps providing some of that in another city, bringing that someplace else and then saying that it was brought to you by the city of Miami, where you can experience a little bit of Miami and then maybe awaken or inspire someone to travel here. And then when they arrive here, perhaps giving them similar experiences, where they can have, you know, the increase in the Brazilian community, the increase in the Haitian community, the increase in the Venezuelan community, et cetera, et cetera. So perhaps providing a little bit more of that would make it a little bit more interesting for folks to travel there.
Great, thank you. Yes?
Well, a simple answer, I'm Mary Scott Russell with Chamber South, Chamber of Commerce for Greater South Dade, who started from South Miami through Pinecrest, Palmetto Bay, Calhoun Bay, and Altimondo. I'm here about the road, as we read about the South. Transportation and transit system, I mean, really, that is probably the thing that separates us most of all from the beaches, which is where the majority of tourism effort is focused. And that, that's made sense up until a certain point. I think that if we were to take something like that great program we all do, your Miami Spice, which I love, I was talking to Nori in the event earlier today. She goes, yeah, I had a cafe from Lecce and a biscotti, and I laughed. And I thought, only in Miami, you need to get a biscotti with a cafe from Lecce, you know? And I thought, how cool is that? So how neat to bring the Miami Spice experience down to Schnevene's, or, I don't know, I don't recall seeing it on the list. But if it's not there, it should be. And if we were included in some of those stellar efforts already, that would be a great first step, because I don't expect you all are gonna be able to address our transportation issues in the near future. But it's certainly a concern and part of the challenge for all of us here.
Well, I don't get back yet, because I have a question for you. I've heard transportation in several different venues, and people have mentioned it in different ways. So from where you sit in Miami-Dade County, how do you define the transportation that's lacking? What would, what do you, what do you recommend?
That's a great question.
Queen for a day?
Queen for a day.
Money doesn't matter, what would you do?
It's such a, it's such a challenge for all of us. And I think that the direct line from Metro rail to the Earth World was a great first step. I think that leaving behind the idea of extending something like the light rail system or heavy rail system down to Homestead is something, I understand the costs involved. Where I mean, for a day, money wasn't an issue. I would shoot the rail all the way down to Homestead for starters, you know, personally. But we're, you know, back and forth on that, and it becomes an economics concern. But that would be ideal, because if someone in another city or another country where this public transportation is the easy thing. We only have 24 miles of Metro rail in Miami-Dade County. And I think, I've heard it was 3,000 or something in just New York City Central. I mean, London, it's easy to get around, you just hop on and you go, anywhere you want to go. So we don't have that infrastructure, and we understand that's lacking. But it's something to prepare for and to include in the discussion moving forward. So Queen for a day, I think that's the best I can do right now.
I was a day with More Miami Guide. Just to follow up on what you said, again, it has to do with economics, but it would be great to have a hop-on, hop-off for South Dade, something similar to that. Just a shuttle bus that goes around to the main attractions, every place, the Skim National Park throughout the day, so that tourists can get around to these places. They could go to a park and ride, leave their car there, and have somebody accommodate them. That would be fantastic.
I'm sorry, but I disagree. One of the problems that we've had in South Dade is we try to show people in a half a day, a million acres of agriculture and probably a million acres of the Skim National Park. We are so awesome, and the problem is, we need to get them where they stay longer. They need a walking town in downtown, in the historic district of downtown Altimondo, so that we have cafes, you know, where it used to be old, I don't know, TV shops, whatever. But what is, what is missing is, we need to get the visitors, maybe from Miami Beach, if they're gonna stay, you know, a week or two weeks, and it's cold and they don't wanna go home yet. You know, let them stay three days with us, we're not greedy. But in that three days, we can show them some awesome venues. You know, we can show them agriculture like they've never seen before.
Forgive my ignorance, are there places to stay down here?
A few.
I saw a no, a yes, a maybe.
Yes and no.
Right.
Yeah.
There's a little growth in homes in Florida City. We do have a Hampton Inn Courtyard Marriott, and I believe a new Hilton is going up in Florida City. With gaming, there should, a highlight is also planned in Florida City. So there is growth, there is hotels, they're coming our way.
Okay. What else are we missing? What else are we missing?
As a result of the Homestead Speedway, we are beginning to increase the number of hotels and what have you. So the long extended stays are a wonderful opportunity to really be introduced to this community. It's, I don't think that we have had the opportunity to really define South Dade as actually being an old Florida destination. So that concept of it being rule, that concept of establishing the Main Street Homestead, Florida City and other areas in the South Dade community, from that cultural standpoint, old cultural standpoint, historic cultural standpoint, I think is very important to do. History promoted from here, where it all began is very important to be. And we haven't made those connections from attraction to attraction to all of the various sites that we have in the community. There's history in everything that's here. Our agricultural communities and agricultural historic community. Everything that is here is connected to history and there's nothing that's really connecting all that we have.
Okay. Anything else?
Quick comment.
Yes?
The city that I live in from is at the end of the world in Alaska, but they attract high numbers of tourists. And it's a very small arts little town, very quaint, but it didn't start off that way. And the comments you were talking about, how to revitalize the area, make it desirable for people to come down and spend time there. And of course with art, Miami going on right now, duh, it hit me in the head, up there they began doing wall murals. They would get local artists to volunteer their skills and crafts, get other citizens to actually do paint by number after would be sketched and so forth on panels. And every year they put one up on the side of a building and they, they would make, you know, great decisions over what content would be in the mural, something that would highlight the area. Up there, of course, we had Iditarod and a lot of things like that. So they would do like one for Iditarod this year and one for a famous artist over here would do something. And that's just a suggestion, just a thought, that there is so much talent in South Florida that I don't see why we can't incorporate some of that into, into, to just revitalizing and bringing the cultural aspect down and adding some color and flair someplace people want to go.
Thank you. No idea is a bad idea. Feel free to know everything and share it with us. Anything else that we're missing?
Yeah.
You have a question? Let me answer a question. What's your question?
Talking about California, their marketing ability, they are probably the best in America. Thank you. To, to be able to market themselves. Please, they even make their dairy market look interesting and charming. The...
Well, keep in mind that California marketing, they're marketing the whole state. So we have Visit Florida that markets the whole state of Florida. The Greater Miami Convention of Visitors Bureau does Miami-Dade County. So it's not really an apples to apples comparison. We're focused on your community. We're not interested in what's going on in Orlando. We're not interested in what's going on in Tampa.
Well, maybe we need to get the state more interested because what, what they do is they have Napa Valley, okay? That's agriculture and history and grapes and wine, okay? We have so many varieties and species of fruits and plants and flowers that is unbelievable. And yet our diversity here is what attracts a lot of international visitors.
Well, with that said, I'm going to ask you, Rolando, can you speak just for a moment about what Visit Florida does to promote state economy in particular? I don't know.
No, that's, that's a fair question. And the analogy is accurate. I mean, the good news is that we, we're working closely with our state partners. Their budget has been recently doubled and is actually larger than California's for this current fiscal year. They just made the new CEO just last week that we've been working with very, very closely. So we're very optimistic with their new funding model, their new leadership, that we're going to take advantage of the resources. We were, Bill, Talbot and I were up in Orlando at the marketing retreat just this week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. We serve on the International Committee, Bill's on their audit committee, a part of their board, their executive committee. We have someone that's now on their advertising internet committee. So trust us that we will be carrying the Miami-Dade County flag because, you know, there's a lot of focus on, you know, Florida itself is very diverse and so is Miami-Dade County. But I do think there's an opportunity to showcase, we are the subtropical part of the state. It's dramatically different once you get, you know, this north of the lake. So it is something that is a high priority for us. So we're, we're going to be carrying that message louder there. But thank you for that suggestion.
Thanks, Rolando. So anything else that we're missing?
My question is, what happens when someone gets off of an airplane, whether it's at Tamiami Airport or Miami National Airport, that would say to them, go to the ocean? Or would say to them, go to the Everglades? The, the big flashy sexy marketing that we see is all about our beautiful beaches and I don't see any of our beautiful alligators. But I mean, really, the ecotourism is, it's, it's hot. It's a big deal and we have this amazing opportunity here. So maybe you consider that as part of their marketing campaign. What do people see now when they get off? Did you, can you...
Well, I was just in the airport about four hours ago.
Tell me what it looks like from, from there.
Saw a lot of shops.
Right.
I couldn't tell you.
I saw the zoo exhibit.
The zoo, Zoo Miami.
Does the Zoo Miami pay for that or is that our convention visitor area? I think it's...
I think what you're referring to is creating more of a sense of place arrival. I mean, 96% of all our visitors comes through that airport. So wherever we, and it's MIA, the process of Tamiami, I can't speak to, those are those brutally rich folks in town for our balls and their private chest, but we want those too. But we are working closely with the airport and the airport director has given us an opportunity to, to invest in, in new visuals for the airport. And that's something that our president is, is supporting financially. In fact, several images around the room, including airboat rides in the Everglades, this is part of our new campaign. We've got, you know, we've, we've got several images that are frankly better showcasing the diversity of our community. Update is something that is very, very near and dear to, not only the organization, but, but to me personally, that's how I started in this industry after Hurricane Andrew. So it, it is first and foremost, now, the airport is a vast complex. And little by little, I do go, I do keep coming back to the airport, whether the murals that you'll see on the walls through the passenger pickup area or even through customs, the customs there, they have been giving us license and we're actually paying to install images like these and many others. And ecotourism, the visual, hell, alligators are very sexy, right? And the lighting is just right. But, but we, we get that, that flora, the fauna. In fact, we are somewhat times hesitant and we don't want to only put forward this, overly sensual or in some cases sexual, you know, yes, it is part of the equation, but we feel the flora, the fauna, you know, the, the flowers, the orchids that call Miami home, those are the colors that pop off those backlit boxes in the airport. So you're, you're, you're going to start seeing a lot more of that, but it is great feedback because as we build this plan and, and as I said earlier, our priority is to incent people to stay. We want them to not just stay for four or five nights and take them with South Beach or downtown or the Grove, but we want folks to, to go further afield. There's new parts of our community and there's older parts of our community that are coming back into their own. And I think what's happened in terms of, I think the hotel thing is, is a critical part of this. There is some opportunity, there are some accommodations, it's fallen out enough yet. I know there's been some recent legislative changes that allow the institution of more better breakfasts to help support the agriculture. That's huge and that's something I think we can all work together to help cultivate.
Let me just piggyback to, to get it's clear that the opportunities, new opportunities at the airport that we have, Rolando said we pay for it, just the cost of materials. We're not buying ad space. It's free. So all of those pictures are free because of the relationship. We pay for the images, but we're not paying retail rack rates to ad space and it's because of our relationship. And at the end of the day, when we say we'll pay for it, they don't have anything they can, any points of resistance now. Okay. So that's, that's because of relationships.
Our Kathy Garrett, here is Dana Cutler. Are there, is there a promotional campaign tied to those pictures? So if they're seeing the pictures, they've had...
What?
Is there a promotional campaign of...
It's, it's connected to, we insist on... URL.
All drives to the website.
Yeah, we insist, and technically, I don't want to stay in the court, but we insist that we're going to do those, D M R U R, so that drives to our website.
Good question. Yes?
For me, but I don't know the ins and outs of what's happening, but just to answer your question, the South Florida National Parks will have a section in the airport where there will be information and visuals about the national parks in South Florida, not just Biscayne and Everglades, but also Big Cypress National Preserve and Red Rock Tuke's National Park. So that's coming. I don't know who's paying for the materials, probably one of our partners, and I don't know when it's going to happen, but it's going to happen.
And looking at our South Dade communities, this is America's oldest tropical garden community. And creating trails, I think is a very important concept because they can really keep people for a number of days as they begin to visit the various gardens, from Fairchild Gardens to Pinecrest Gardens to our Fruit and Spice Parks, to all the various spaces, the Miami Zoo and what have you, that are the garden spaces. Connecting trails, if it's waterway trails, that we many times forget, but we are connected along Biscayne Bay with great history as well, as well as our garden trails, that, that kind of concept will definitely, and I know that's done in other communities and it's something that we definitely need to look at.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on. 72 more. You all interact with people who don't live here on a regular basis, whether it's through your professional role or through people who visit you. What do they tell you about what it's like to visit here? What do you hear from them? I know you talk to them, talking to me, just talking about them. Yes? I'm sure you talk to them. Many.
All day long. They talk about the, the issue that I brought up before, how the public transportation sticks. They can't get anywhere. A cab from the Hotel Sofitel to Biscayne National Park is astronomical. And to take a public transportation from there would be an entire day, very confusing and quite an experience. And probably they'll get lost and never make it anywhere. And it will include a cab at some point also. So that's what people say commonly, they can't get anywhere.
Okay. Thank you. What else do they say? They don't say anything.
Brian, this is the Traveler Everglades Visitor Association. I, I had a two hour conversation a couple of months ago, so I've been kind of quiet with it. To the first question, national parks, national parks, national parks, that's really hasn't been promoted. It's starting to, but we've lost a whole generation nationally, domestically, of people who don't know what the Everglades is anymore, let alone Biscayne. Biscayne's in the shadow of that. So certainly that's a big opening for Miami Beaches and all this area to promote. I would agree with the on off, we have to have transportation signage. We need an on off shuttle down here. We need to get people from the airport, we need to get people to the parks. You can go down on the busway now to Florida City, but you can go to Key West, you can go up to Broward, you can go to the beach a thousand different ways, but you can't get to our, our parks, which are nine miles. So that's, that's the basis of what we need to do. And then I would bring up just, and I'm always talking about this, the Sunpass. I think we need to get a program like the one that the taxi drivers, because people are really hurting, the, the people renting cars are getting ripped off daily. And that's, and that's, that's triple down on tourism.
I'm sorry, they're getting ripped off daily, how?
Yeah, the, the rates are not consistent. I think, you know, basically...
Well, you said Sunpass and then I, you lost me.
Sunpass is, and, and South Florida has been the epicenter of this, where, where, Avis or, I don't know if I'm getting names, but let's say one car rental charges $2 a day at the $6 a week. A dollar might charge $37 a week.
Okay.
And if you don't sign in, you're being threatened with a $20, $5 fee. And, and the others, rest of the state hasn't really had this happening yet, but it's coming.
Okay.
But it's bad for our tourism.
It was interesting today, we flew in and landed in front of the West. So we flew over a little, little piece of the Everglades and heard people behind, what's that out the window? And the parents said, I have no idea. So your point's well made on it being lost on a generation of people. The little girl said, is that the ocean? I certainly hope not. Far more fascinating.
So what do they tell you?
You know, it's interesting because I have the opportunity to work with so many people that are from the Caribbean as an example. Many people from the Caribbean diaspora are further north in New York and other areas. And when they come down here, they're so thrilled to be able to go to the herb gardens and the various places where they can find those medicinal products, those herbs and what have you, and they don't have to go back home to the Caribbean, they can actually get them right here. So it's, it's a wonderful economic engine, economic opportunity. It's a wonderful situation to be able to drive them. They just think it's fabulous that they can come here and they can buy this, the, the same kind of products, the aloe and the this and the that that we use for medicinal purposes that they could have to get at home right here in our South Dade area. So that's something that's, that's wonderful indeed.
Do you hear any bad things? People who are visiting here and have bad things, as you mentioned, transportation. Anything else that you hear that they didn't like?
Traffic.
Customs, customs delays.
Customs delays? Okay. The Bureau cites the statistics, four out of five people visit Miami and come back. Why doesn't the fifth person come back?
Customs.
Because of customs. So do you hear any good things? What do they like when they come here?
Restaurants. Orchids.
Restaurants and orchids. They're, you're done. Our plan is restaurants and orchids though. Anything else? Okay. Let's go on to the next one. Finally, we're up to question 75. What can we do to improve the tourist experience? We've given us some good feedback so far. We've heard a number of different things. Now put on the big picture hat, this is how can we improve it for all, not necessarily just for individual entities within Miami-Dade County? How can we improve the tourist experience regardless of where they go in the county?
You say regardless of where they go in the county, but after Hurricane Andrew, there was so much of our green experience that was not restored. So the image of our community to be more green, to be with new planting, native trees, native plants, that kind of situation. So there's continuity throughout Miami-Dade County. I was so thrilled when I saw along even the Turnpike though, we have palm trees that we did not have before. And so the re-greening of our community across the board to improve that experience from an aesthetic standpoint and as, and as well as the quality of life. We, we forget that that's a very important part. When we talk about nature, we talk about the trees and the plants and what have you, there's a health issue that is there, safety issue that's there that goes along with all of that. Those aspects in re-greening our community will make a big difference. And then connecting to our tourist experience to the green industry so that, because people are actually looking at and looking for green logic. And it makes sense that that situation should start here because many of the products are actually developed in the South Dade area.
Thank you.
I think that some of our attractions, not all of them, some of our attractions are aging and some are showing signs of wear. And I think it would be very important to, if not all possible, to find resources to help improve or update some of the facilities because that is the comment that I hear from people that come down. And the other thing is, this is more industry wide. There are, our, our economy here is largely based on tourism, yet for smaller businesses who want to start a tourist company, sometimes they find it difficult to find the information that they need to find out where do they get the partner license, you know, basic business information. And it would be great to have a one star shop that you could go that can help them out. I'm not so sure the tourist bureau provides that, but if they do, you know, to get that information out.
So Rolando's sitting right behind you. You provide that?
Well, you know, actually, I was about to make a, I was about to make a note that that's the first time we actually heard that. And I know we like to talk about statistics, one, you know, one in five folks work in sports and tourism, but, you know, there is an organization that we work with closely that is the lead entity. And I know South Dade also has that... that we work with closely that is the lead entity, and I know South Date also has dedicated entities to work on economic development issues. We do work closely with the Beacon Council, I think South Date at one point had Division Council, I'm not sure, or working with the Chambers of Commerce, but we'd love to consider the role that we can play in terms of consolidating some of those resources. I mean, we're not the lead entity for how to navigate the business development waters in our community, but we have invested interest, because if we can assist in helping develop more tourism, critical mass, more businesses, then obviously it expands the offerings, it brings more tourists, puts more people in hotels, more tourist taxes are generated, then we can then reinvest in marketing. So we do have invested interest, so that's a great idea, first idea, first time we hear that.
We did help with a master plan recently.
Yeah, and you know, to your earlier comment regarding the attractions, in particular in South Date, and I don't believe that anybody here from the Dumont Conservancy or Monkey Jungle, we have been, we have been working, and that's part of this process, they're going through a master planning process for some of their ideas in the future. I know there's the Redland Tropical Trail, there is, and I know Brian is working very closely with TIVA. We see our role in helping support these organizations, and whether it's the broad-based organizations like TIVA, or the Redland Tropical Trail, or even an attraction like Monkey Jungle, that's been around, I believe since the 20s, and perhaps frankly, and they need the first ones to admit, perhaps are in the needs of re-energizing themselves. We have supported them, and they're, through their recent master, master planning process, but those are all great comments.
Thank you. Any final ideas on how we can improve the overall experience? Yes?
Sorry.
That's okay. Why are we here?
It's not my usual MO, I'm usually pretty quiet. Thanks.
Thank you. I sit on the Center for Service Excellence Committee from Miami-Dade College, and we work to train the first contact that our visitors have. We worked, they work to, primarily with hotel and restaurant employees, to make certain, it's similar to the Miami Knights campaign you all launched years ago. So I think that that's a step in the right direction, and we can't do enough of that. The first experience you have at the airport is a sublimed cab driver, that's your first impression of Miami, right? So I think that those continued efforts need to be supported, and that's something that we're all trying to do together. So the customer service training is really good.
Thank you.
To pick up on Mary Scott's idea, do we have a visitor center at the airport? Or for sure, or anything, maybe a computer that will...
We...
Yeah, maybe a computer that will lead tourists to the Great Miami Visitors Convention, where they can type in and look for destination. Some of them don't come with travel guides, they come alone. So perhaps having some sort of kiosk there, just so that tourists can pick up information on our community.
The airport does in fact have several information counters. In fact, you know, the airport is rebuilding itself, and they're actually quite nice, the new ones. We met with them recently, about three weeks ago, and because of our partnership, they are actually making available to us counter space in strategic locations, not just for the purposes of getting out information, because they actually do that. In fact, it's welcome publication, is there, we have publications that list a lot of the offerings throughout the community, including South Date. But we're also, we're further expanding our relationship with the airport, and they are, again, saying to us, "Help us fill content at the airport." You know, there's thirty-some-odd million folks that goes to that airport. So we've talked a little bit about Miami Spice Restaurant Month, for example, Miami Attractions Month, that we also, they're asking us to bring those programs to life within the airport as a campus, and it's something that we just recently spoke with them, and we will look to make investments where we will bring to life some of what's happening outside the airport into the airport, because not all the folks stay in Miami. MI is a huge, you know, a lot of folks are in transit. We get about thirteen million, you know, thirteen and a half million overnight visitors, but we get more than twice that much, and our folks are connecting. So if we can give them a flavor of what Miami and South Miami-Dade has to offer, then hopefully we can entice them, give them information as well, and have them, next time they come back, they're actually staying.
Yes, and as Director for the Homestead Barstool Chamber, I found a need that down south, we do not have a visitor's guide. So we do have tourists that do somehow find their way to that South Date, but we also have other visitors, which of course are the troops that come in and work at the base, it's a reserve base. So they are in need of information about things to do, what to do, where to stay, where to go. And another type of visitor that we do have are employees that work for Turkey Point, Florida Pirate Night. So the Chamber has embarked in producing a visitor's guide. My question to you is, where do I go for help?
Well, there are several visitor guides. We do produce a visitor's guide that encompasses all of Miami County, including South Date, and there's significant editorial coverage of South Date. We do that as we would do South Beach, and we literally have a formula that we use, and we line up the pages and make sure that there's equitable representation of all parts of the community. Of course, our partners at Tiva produce...
We do fifty thousand visitor guides.
Yeah, they have their visitor guide, and we support that as well, and as you know, they're right there in Florida City and Homestead, and we provide them with some support and some content. I mean, we, one doesn't have to be mutually exclusive of the other one, so the fact that more organizations are wanting to communicate...
Yeah, we are going to produce one, but of course we'll highlight the Chamber members, as well as places to visit, and restaurants to see, so...
I know we're slightly off-topic, but that's something that I welcome, and I'll give you a business card, I welcome learning more about that visitor's guide, to see how we can support it. And distribution is critical as well. There's a lot of great visitor guides there, but if you can't get them out, then, and that's where we can help, because we do distribute globally. We have forty-five different offices around the globe, and a big part of it is getting not just the great content, but getting it out there, and critically digitally, because as you know, more and more, having the printed piece is great for local distribution, but you want to get that content in their hands before they get there, so they can plan those additional nights in South Miami-Dade.
Yeah, the guide that we plan is going to go on our website. But on that note, my idea, again, going back to Mary Scott's, is to have someone, a body that will meet a tourist, because that friendly face will definitely make a better impact than a brochure hanging on a wall. And also for you to realize the other two aspects of our community, which are visitors, the base, and also Turkey Point employees. They are here sometimes three months to a year.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other thoughts on what we can do overall to improve tourist experience here? You give us some great ideas, and I want to point out, great ideas that we haven't heard anywhere else. A lot of times after you do a lot of these, you think, "Okay, we're talking about theater." You've given us a lot of different things, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
In our community, we have people from one hundred and fifty-six different nations that live in Miami-Dade County. Here in our community, to be able to develop a special brand of hospitality that is focused in South Date with the tropical experience, tropical hosts, who are actually representatives of various cultures, so that they become ambassadors of culture, and that people see themselves in the tourist experience. I think that's very important to feed. I know we were doing some work not too long ago with the Black Hospitality Initiative from the Great Miami Convention of Visitors Bureau, and we were talking about working with the national parks, and how we might increase the visitorship of African-American experiences, which is across the nation, very limited, one to seven percent. Creating new opportunities for understanding, opportunities for family recreation, creating opportunities so that various cultural segments of our community that otherwise not had the focus that we need to, that we really make concerted effort to reach out in terms of marketing specifically, and developing campaigns that reach out. I know that the Convention of Visitors Bureau does a wonderful job indeed, in terms of reaching out to our multicultural audience and what have you, but we're looking at the Convention of Visitors Bureau, and working in with Black Hospitality, and working with the Redland Tropical Gardens, and developing that tropical host that offers multilingual, multicultural tourism experiences. So many times we've brought people, particularly Chinese, Japanese, that love this whole sustainable experience, and they come out, they need translators and what have you. We're offering that now, we're offering those kind of experiences specifically in this area, because that's where sustainability is really focused on. So multilingual, multicultural tour guides, people that will represent this community forever.
Thank you. Yes?
Sorry, it's...
I didn't see the mic. Go ahead.
No, it's okay. Something else that would improve the tourist experience, knowledge, is love, speed, power, and perhaps educating those that are the tourist approach. Because some folks don't want to leave the beach, some come here just because they want to have R&amp;R, they just want to lay out, they don't want to do anything. But then there are some that want, they quote, "local" experience. Where do the locals go? Where do they hang out? Where do they have dinner? They want to know about the Coral Gables experience, Coconut Grove experience, Downtown, Brickell, other areas where the locals would typically go, and then having someone who can feel their audience and know what they're asking, and they know exactly where to send them, so that they can say they had the local experience that a Miami local person would have. And something else, when you think of, the second point is, when you think of Costa Rica, folks would think of surfing, same thing with California. If you think New York in the winter, you're going to think skiing, Pocono skiing as well. I don't know, I'm sure most realizes, but my brother's a scuba diver, and when he thinks of Miami, he thinks scuba diving. Not just down the Keys, but off of Key Biscayne, there are great scuba diving tours that he takes advantage of whenever he comes down to visit, and that could be another selling point, or sports, water sports, the jet skiing, the water skiing, the paddle boarding. And scuba diving, it has a great market that most, I don't think too many have explored or exploited.
That's great, thank you. You made me realize about Florida, and I, when you said people think of New York in the winter, the first thing I thought of was cold. That's it.
I'm not sure how accessible, like when you come from another country, how accessible the internet is here, but I know when I traveled to Asia, that in the airport, you can rent a mobile Wi-Fi, and for other than that, I couldn't get around, because I don't speak any of those Asian languages. So I don't know if the airport has something like that here?
I don't know. Anyone know?
They're actually absent, actually, translation, they offer that as well as felt, and they're in there.
So you've learned something from another audience, probably. Anything else we can do to improve the experience? Well, that's all, seventy-five of my questions, didn't they go by quickly? And I'm going to turn it over to Rolando to take us home.
Well, we are, you know, we have a few extra minutes, but I really wanted to bring up our President, Bill Toward, you know, he's leading this journey of ours, as I started off by saying, this plan is critical. There is, he mentioned the website, and I'm going to go ahead and stress it again, because, did I skip that over? Hold up. Oh, there it is, yeah. So this website, I know this is a great session, and we had some great feedback, other ideas may crop up, a lot of the same topics are on this website, destinationmiami.org. Our general timing, just to give you a sense, as I mentioned, there was a committee that's helping us shepherd this process along. We are anticipating, in fact, as early as next week, getting an update from our partners on where we're at in the process, but our goal is come, you know, come January, is to start putting together the framework of our draft plan, and at some point in the near future, we will in fact have a large, a large town hall meeting, bringing the community together, ensuring with them all where we're at in the process. So with that, let me turn it over to Bill to...
I'm going to be very brave, I'm going to stand next to this South Date, this South Miami. I guess it's here for a reason, Rob.
It is, and by the way, someone mentioned paddle boarding, and we all know the rage that paddle boarding is now, and I know we don't have it in the room, but we do have an ad dedicated to paddle boarding, and the eco experience that our friends from Miami-Dade County and the Durey, the Durey facility, and I think it's in Matheson Hammont Park, which is, who would have thought? I mean, you can actually do some great paddle boarding trails in our parks.
So with that said, you know, we're glad you're here. I think Steve said it, you know, the good news is, we've heard new things here, and I guess that's characteristic of South Date, you know? You're special people here in South Date, so, and we know that, and we, right, Brian?
It's diverse.
Diverse, diverse, so we're glad you're here. Do go to the website, fill it out, if you have any other ideas, email us, call Rolando, call me, but you know, there's a great future ahead of us, great opportunities, whether it's a bigger visit Florida, new brand USA, which we haven't even talked about, the United States government now has a destination marketing organization, so there's a great future, but we just need to all collectively figure out, where do we want to go in the next five years? We've come a long way, baby, but there's a lot of competition out there. Thank you for being here.
Please, there's some pastries, take a doggy bag. Oh, yes, we have, and we'll be around for a bit, there's a...
Barry Scott.
I just want to say thank you for coming here to us.
Thank you for coming here to us. We, I think I speak for all of us in South Date when I say we appreciate the effort and the visit, and it's important to us, and we want to be part of everything that happens going forward. We sometimes feel a little left behind, it means a great deal to us here that you all took the time to come down and make South Date a part of this effort, so thank you for that.
Thanks for that.
Did you record that?